Okay, it's nine o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. This is a city council work session day, and so prior to our work session, we're having a citizen interactive session. And this is something we just started a number of months ago, and it's an opportunity to engage with a citizen on a more in-depth topic. And so this morning's topic is code enforcement through the community. And Jim Hogsness brought this topic to our attention as something that he has an interest in learning more about and has some ideas and some questions, and that's kind of how this is set up. And so I think this involves our police department, because code enforcement falls under you guys, so you are at the table as well, as well as a code enforcement officer. And so this is a chance to ask questions, see if there's opportunities to make anything better, listen to a citizen on those issues, and then have city council, I think, dig in and know a little bit more about how we do code enforcement in our community. Anything else that Bill or Ann would want to add at this point?
Just a reminder that I'll give you about a five-minute warning when we get to the end of the conversation, because we do have the work session afterwards, and so people need to shift around. And for this conversation, Jace Hawkewell, our planning manager, is here, because he helps the PD with certain code enforcement matters. So in case something is regarding a building permit or planning noncompliance, Jace is here to help answer any questions that you have. And otherwise, I think we've got other people in the room if it comes up.
Great reminder. I think of code enforcement as all being PD, but I need to understand better when and how our planning department is involved, so thank you for that. Okay. Mr. Hogsness, welcome.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I think this is a nice venue to reach out to citizens and find out what some of their concerns are. But before I get into the main topic here, I'd really like to thank the council, the staff, and everything else for the wonderful job in planning the downtown area, making investments in the community is just really fantastic. I've lived here for 24 years, and when I moved here, you know, downtown was kind of like a meh, you know, it's okay. Now it's just really wonderful to walk around the different shops and things like that. And it's, I was talking to the mayor the other day about, you know, people complaining about having to walk to a store or anything else like that. And, you know, just picture yourself going to Walmart and wanting to go get some bread. You know, you make about the same number of steps from the parking lot back to, you know, where you pick up bread or milk. So anyway, I think it's really nice, it's really convenient. I also really like the investments that were made through Mura out at Colorado Outdoors. I think that's really great, it's starting to come together, and hopefully, you know, some of these things come online, they'll start making some return on investment. So with that, I would, some of my concern, I'll give you a little bit of my background. My background is in the fire service, and a period of time in my career, I was a fire marshal. And we would do inspections, code enforcement, and things like that. So I'm very well aware of, you know, some of the issues that are involved in, you know, meeting the public and seeking compliance to, you know, the various ordinance that are made. So with that, I know you all studied the citizen survey, and I'd like to address the issue of enforcement of city codes and ordinances. So in rank importance, it's number four. So the citizen thinks, they think it's pretty high, a pretty important thing to do, and there's a 47% satisfaction rate, which may mean that there's 53% dissatisfaction rate. And it ranks 10th in the satisfaction rate. So I think there's a lot of room for improvement. I'd like to go down the list here and take a look at quality of police services. So folks said that that was most important, was 21%, and they had a 77% satisfaction rate. And so what does that tell us? I mean, you know, law enforcement can be very onerous sometimes, and not so, around the country, satisfaction rate with law enforcement is not very good. But in Montrose, I think we're fortunate to have a really fine police department, and I think people are really happy with that. And you can judge that by the new police center. But I think the folks like what the chief and staff are doing there. So why is it, why is it code enforcement, which under the police department, is not ranking the same as basically police services? Okay, so that was the question, that was the question I had. And you've set me up with a meeting with Commander Velazquez and Inspector Walter, Kevin Walter, and we had a real nice chat for probably about maybe an hour or so. And we went over a lot of different issues involved in the code enforcement part of it. So the top priorities confirmed by the survey and also by our meeting was the cleanup of debris and junk on private property, and mowing and cutting of weeds on private property. So we talked a little bit about what the scope of enforcement, code enforcement was, and Kevin was very helpful in identifying these. And basically, it's weeds, trash, abandoned vehicles, parking trailers on the street, neighbor disputes, and junk on private property. So these are mainly the things that he's dealing with. So additional duties that we talked about, circled around or centered around law enforcement issues, basically supporting patrol activities, you know, keeping an eye out for, you know, people who are, you know, maybe have a warrant or whatever, you know, abandoned, stolen vehicle, things like that. And we talked about the value of having a certified law enforcement officer as a code enforcement officer, because they have access to the NCIC and CCIC database. So they'd be able to do a search and so forth, and alert patrol officers. So I think it's really helpful, and I think that's a good, that's a good idea. The other one, see, the third thing was complaints are usually not in person. And so if they're not in person, if it's like a phone call, or you respond to the city website, I think you have a place for complaints in that.
An app.
So what you're missing, pardon me?
For suggestions, not complaints.
For suggestions, okay. We suggest that you have this guy clean up his trash. Okay. So if you do that, you fail to establish a rapport with not only the person making the complaint, but also in the person who is, you want to, you know, get some change of behavior. So, and this kind of shocked me, there's between 10 and 20 reports per day, and which is basically a lot to handle. And these require anywhere from 10 to, or five to 10 days to resolve it, and if they don't resolve it, you're looking at summons to court. In the last year and a half, there's been about 20 cases that have gone to court. And investigations take a lot of time. So this is kind of where we're at. You know, I believe that there's not enough rapport between the, you know, between the city and the residents with regard to code resolution. Okay, so we talked a little bit about some proactive recommendations. And the first one would be to increase staff. Adding an additional inspector would be very helpful, because the current inspectors work four times, it'll be Monday through Thursday. And we're missing the opportunity to talk to people on the weekends. So Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we have no contact with residents. So that would be a recommendation that I certainly would have, and I think supported by the chief and the inspector, the inspection team. We could use volunteers. And I don't necessarily want to have a vigilante committee or a posse or anything else, but you could use volunteers to inform as to what, you know, they think is, needs to be correct, and there needs to probably be some education with that. You could deal with homeowners associations and neighborhood watches, as well as social media. One of the things that I asked Kevin about, I said, you know, what do you, what do you drive? And he said, well, I drive a city pickup truck. And I said, well, how do people know, you know, what you're doing? You're just driving around. And basically, it's just like a regular pickup truck. And one of the suggestions that I would make is to take that vehicle and make it clearly marked as code enforcement. When the, just think about when law enforcement's out there, they're driving around in their police cars and so forth, you know, people see them out there actually being part of the community. When the inspector's out there, they don't know what's going on. And I think it would be very helpful to have a marked vehicle that says "code enforcement" on it. I think a more recognizable uniform of the inspector would be helpful. Right now, I think it's just like, not that I'm saying he's not a fashion plate, but I think, you know, a golf shirt, it may not be as appropriate as some other type of uniform. I understand that it's difficult to find employees. One of the suggestions we talked about would be working on some type of law enforcement internship, you know, through a community college, or I think there's a part of the school in Grand Junction. One of the things, one of the things that the county deals with, as far as their inspection regime, is dealing with people new to the community, and what their expectations are. The county handles this by basically explaining to them that, well, it's the code of the West, you know, basically, which means that, you know, you're coming to a community that has certain expectations, procedures, laws, and so forth, you know, live within those, you know, and basically don't make any complaints, which I don't agree with. But I do think that it's important to understand the expectations of new residents, and I think that there should be, in a complaint basis, if you do a survey, it would be helpful to have some type of demographic information to see if there's a shift, you know, of new people and so forth, who's making, you know, basically who's making the complaints. I know my son lives out in California, and he lives on a cul-de-sac, and right next to the cul-de-sac is an apartment building, and so they actually have parking restrictions, so you can't park on a public street without a permit, you know, and that wouldn't go very well around here. But that, if he were to move here, he might say, well, why aren't we doing it, why aren't we doing it here? Take a look at the demographics. I think that, as I mentioned earlier, I think we need to reach out and increase public contact, public engagement, and I believe that if we do, if we do that, we're going to make the inspector more personal. It's gonna feel more like they are concerned about your issue, and that you're just not in number, other numbers. More public contact with the complaint person, and also with the person that needs to, you know, clean things up would be very helpful. One of the, I think, important things is that the inspector would be able to assist in identifying dangerous people and situations. And that's why I think it's important to have, if you can, the inspector have access to the FBI and color database. Okay. So I think there's three goals that I think we should be looking at. And Commander Velazquez came up with the first one, and basically it's to change behavior. It's, you're not out there trying to make money on collecting fines. Basically, what you want to do is you want to change the behavior, and if you can change the behavior, you're gonna end up with, I think, a better rapport with the community, and also to let, you know, the complainant know what the resolution is. One of the things that you may want to try is changing the name of code enforcement to code compliance, and I think it's a little softer touch. I can just see, you know, a vehicle running around that says "code compliance," you know, rather than code enforcement, so. And I think that visibility, increased visibility, and personally engage citizens is a very good goal to have. And I think doing those things, you're going to see your satisfaction rate go up, and the, I don't know, what was it called, up here? It was the rank. So the rank should go, satisfaction rank should go up, and the importance should go down, because people are comfortable with what's going on insofar as code enforcement goes. No. Last thing I have is, I am not a citizen of the city, however, I live right
Did you say state or city?
Well, I said city. I'm hearing Jace. I am not a resident of the city of Montrose, okay, and I live
We can add you.
Well, that's, you know, that's kind of what I'm talking about here. So right across the street from me is the city of Montrose, across the little fence. And so the people in, across the fence, living in the city, have certain regulations that the people living in the county right across the fence don't have. And so they're gonna wonder why they have to, they can't burn. I mean, I can burn in my property. I, one of my neighbors even burns their garbage. And so I think that what I would like to see, and I've talked to the county about this, is that we work on having the same goals, procedures, inspection regime in the city within the urban growth area, urban growth boundary, the same as the county. Because eventually, these are going to, like Councilor Glassbell just said, we're gonna annex you in. You know, I know it's not necessarily in advantage of the city, but, you know, eventually that's gonna happen. And I think as it does, if we can get ahead of the game and look at, I've got inspection process codes, ordinance that are pretty well matched up to the county, I think this transition will be a lot smoother. So, that's my complaint. That's my concern.
That's a lot of information to break down. I think there's multiple pieces we could address. Maybe I'll start by turning it over to the PD for a brief explanation of how our current, how, for council's benefit and any public that want to know, how code enforcement currently works, what does it look like?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and Jim, I appreciate you coming today. This is, code enforcement is not just your concern. We talk about it as a command staff internally, that code enforcement and animal services are two things that we do get a lot of complaints on, and so we try to do the best job that we can. Maybe I can just start with the process in which, however a complaint is received, and what our code enforcement officer does, just as a general rule. We do, I think, try to develop a very good relationship with the complainant and with the individual that's being complained upon. In fact, over recent years, we've had a few code enforcement officers, and they have No problem. Siri apparently enjoys what I'm saying. They have had different personalities, and sometimes those personalities have been less inclusive to working with individuals and more inclusive to go right to, I think, a citation. In Kevin's case, I think that he does try to develop a rapport. Sometimes that rapport doesn't go as planned. For instance, this morning, he started his Monday morning off with having to call backup for one of our police officers for an individual who was not, not being compliant. But in general, when he receives a complaint, his first duty is to go out and to, let's say, inspect the property, whether that's weeds, it normally has to do with the property or some type of abandoned vehicle. He inspects it to see whether or not it's in violation of one of our code enforcement, code compliance ordinances. That's, all of those are contained in Title VI, so that's keeping of junk, keeping of abandoned vehicles, weeds, et cetera. One of the complaints that we get often is that it takes too much time for people to clean things up. Why can't the city force these people to clean these things up? And so I think we tried to respond to that. We used to give a few verbal warnings first before we issued a warning letter. We've changed our process, so when Kevin goes out, if the property or the weed issue violates our ordinance, then he issues a warning letter immediately upon determining that that's a violation, and he gives one week to have the situation abated. If that week passes and nothing occurs within that piece of property, or the weeds aren't abated, the junked vehicle isn't taken away, then his mandate is to issue a citation. And then that goes into municipal court. Matthew Magliar can maybe lend some thoughts into that process if you'd like. But we have really shrunk down our, I guess, the time that we give individuals to abate it. But I will say that if an individual is working with us within that seven days, trying to clean up their property, has done something, then we will work with them. And I think that's that, I think that's that relationship piece that we try to, we try to complete. But if they don't, we go right to a citation within seven days. We have, and this is something we started, I don't know, Jace maybe about a year ago, a lot of times Kevin's realm moves into Jace's realm and vice versa. And so Jace has helped us with different issues, we've helped Jace with different issues. For example, we had an individual who was illegally living in a shed, causing a lot of problems. And that's not something that we have the authority over, as far as within our codes in Title VI, but Jace does an archery through building compliance. But we're still enforcing our. So at the end of the day, if there is noncompliance for a building issue that really comes down to health, safety, and welfare, then we will come together and we will be the ones to issue a citation, and in that case, we did issue a citation under the building code. So I did want to bring up one more thing. I really wanted to, I wanted to read an email here. This is an email from Kevin for his, I would say, week in the life of a code enforcement officer. In the summertime, Kevin's primary, I guess, focus, if you will, is weeds. He chases weeds, and then often transients with abandoned vehicles around all over the city. As, of course, the weather changes and things die down in weeds, then he focuses on junk. We have instituted a process, if you will, where Kevin's identified the top five properties in the city to focus on for junk, and then once those five properties are abated, then he moves on to the next life. So let me read you an email from November 6th, and this is a week and four days of his life. He abated nine signs, so of course we have all the garage sale signs and things like that that pop up. One, keeping of junk at 1623 Canton Avenue. When I checked, the junk was gone. Four parking warning notices, 200 blocks south lot, 000 block of Aspen, 1200 blocks south fifth, and 1400 block of Avon. Two more parking, 1200 blocks south fifth, 200 blocks south Townsend. One abandoned vehicle on private property, junk, 700 block of North Mesa. One abandoned vehicle, red-tagged Bristol Cone and Sequoia. One summons, sent certified mail for nuisances created by trees and nuisances prohibited. One abandoned vehicle, red tags, 000 block of South Stowe. One violation notice for keeping of junk and nuisances prohibited, 1029 South Park. One littering, number one alley, 1,000 blocks south. One trees violation on other road. One violation notice for storage of litter, keeping of junk, nuisances, 508 South Fourth. One violation notice, storage of litter, keeping of junk, 111 Aspen. One violation of notice, storage of litter and keeping of junk, 109 Aspen. One abandoned vehicle, junk, red-tagged, 500 blocks south. Fourth, one abandoned vehicle, red-tagged, 100 South Mesa. I'm still working on the 137 North Cascade, 830 South Park, and 146 North Sixth, 1001 North Seventh. So I think that there's definitely things that he is, he's doing throughout the city, but those all take time. And so I think, in general, our public may not understand, and I give this example, when an officer is driving down the street, and they clock someone for speeding, 43 and a 30 on North Townsend, that individual is on the, on the public street. And so that officer is able to turn on his red and blues, you know, whether they cite that individual, or they, or they give them a verbal warning, and then they send them on their way. Kevin is dealing with private property, and so there are, there's a much higher level of an expectation of privacy. There's obviously the Fourth Amendment, and then there's also the Fourteenth Amendment, which is due process. And so in order to, in order really to eventually have to abate a property if it goes to a citation, we have to be able, and maybe Matthew can talk about some of this, we have to show that we gave that citizen, because it's their private property, an amount of due process. Now, we've shrunk that down, but there has to be some due process, because we are dealing with a person's private property. There are instances, when it comes to health, safety, and welfare, and we had one of these a little while ago, where the city manager has the authority to immediately abate a property if there is, let's say, a flammable, dangerous substance, something like that. Then we can actually hire a company, move in, albeit the Fourth Amendment, and take care of that issue. But as a general rule, that property is someone's private property, and so we have to always balance that with what we're doing, along with the health, safety, and welfare.
Quick question. When we do the mandatory abatement, I know there's a very strict process for that, do we have something, and is like, an assistance program for people? I know one elderly lady that she could not keep up with her weeds, she just did not have the physical ability to do that. Is there any program we have that would kind of give them an assistance, where they could say, I just can't get after, I can't clean this up myself?
We do. And that's through, yeah, that's through Yevavich in Region 10. And so I know at times that even Region 10 has a hard time finding some volunteers. We also, if it has to do with weeds, the city has allowed us to have a seasonal code enforcement officer. And so that's during the summertime, that's for specifically abating those weeds, especially when it's someone who can't do it themselves. But to Jim's point, the issue has been hiring. We had only two individuals apply for that seasonal position. I don't think one even showed up to the interview, and then the other didn't make it through the process. And so, you know, hiring is always, it's still a challenge for us. And so we went through this last summer without a seasonal code enforcement position, which was a challenge, for sure, especially with, you know, the things that Kevin is trying to keep up with.
Yeah. It's the same issue with, because Region 10 struggles to find volunteers, and because they have to pay the volunteers a little bit for their time and gas sometimes, that they, there is always that issue of finding warm bodies to do the work. But if, I mean, that's just something I think that might be beneficial for us to look at, is using, expanding our volunteer pool with other organizations. I know the Association of Montrose Churches has some things, Kevin had a comment.
Actually, a local church could help do this some time, I think, in the future. But it was actually a fully retired city employee that just couldn't do it, and he couldn't help.
Awesome.
Okay, I'm gonna say that into the mic, just 'cause it's, I think we're recording, right? And so Kevin, our code enforcement officer, said there is a church in town that has helped in the past. You know, the question I get a lot is, if people don't clean up their junk, vehicles and big piles of stuff, what, what is the recourse? What can the city do to come in with a dump truck and something and take it and clean it up? And like, what is that worst-case scenario, and how does the city respond? Because people ask me about that.
Great question. So in that particular case, we have zero compliance. They're not working with us at all, they're not cleaning anything up.
And it's not just weeds and
Correct. Yeah, or even if it is.
Okay, but
Yeah. Kevin's gonna write a citation.
Okay.
And so then initiates our municipal court process. And so as a standard process, and I haven't even talked to Kevin about this, I talked a little bit with Matt about this, but our standard process is that we cite the individual, and they are given 30 days before their first appearance in court. Now, that's not specific to code enforcement, that's all site, it's disorderly conduct, speeding, that's just our process. We've been, we've been thinking about shortening that up a little bit, maybe making it two weeks, but there's still that due process component, and that's a conversation I need to have with our municipal court judge. But once that case goes to trial, there's usually not only the violation, but there's also the ordinance of nuisance that's attached to it. And that's, that's the part that allows, as long as the person is found And that's, that's the part that allows, as long as the person is found guilty and the judge through court order, because this isn't health, safety, and welfare, not something the city manager can just say, get on there and clean it up, the judge has to give the PD a court order to have it cleaned up.
And then, and then how does that get cleaned up?
And that gives us the ability to hire a company to abate it. And we actually have a line item in our budget that allows us to pay a company to clean it up. Hence, another thing that we've run into, finding that company to do it. And you know, Jim, Jim's had some of those issues too, I think in the parks realm a little bit, but that's been a challenge too. So, but that's the process.
Does that person have to pay? Do they owe? Is, is they don't? I mean, because I'm assuming if they don't clean it up at that point, they're not going to be super compliant with paying for the cleanup.
Bill, I know just enough to be dangerous. I don't want to give the wrong information, but.
So at that point, they can either pay when we invoice for it, or if they don't, we'll put it on their property taxes. And so it'll go to the property and when they go to pay their property tax, there'll be a lien on there. They'll have to pay that.
So when we put a lien on their property tax, then the county reimburses us for that amount? Is that what, how, happens, how that works? Because since the city does not collect property tax, I'm assuming there's a mechanism for us to get that money back from the county?
Yeah, Shane would know the more, the detailed process on that better than I, but after we put it on the county property taxes, when do they remit?
With the county.
And then, and then the county sends that to us after the fact?
I think the important point that you want to make, people know is that we don't have a city property tax.
We don't have, we don't have a city property tax. That's one of the main points, but also that we are getting that money reimbursed from the county when we put that lien on their property tax. So it isn't like we're arbitrarily paying for someone to get their property cleaned up and we just lose the money.
Correct.
I think Jay David had a question.
Just a couple of comments.
Yeah.
I, I guess I have a couple of observations. This is a great conversation to have, and I appreciate you coming in and discussing it with us. I think it's not just anecdotal evidence. I think we all recognize that we do have a problem. But I think we also know that with the resources that we have, both male or female power and tools in our toolbox, we're doing the best we can right now. So it's, to me, it's a question of recognizing that we do have an issue and expanding our toolbox. Because I do believe we're doing everything we can with what we have to work with today. So that's where I think we should really focus our attention is how do we build more tools in the toolbox? And it may take some time to find the right tools to put in there, but that's kind of where I'm going with this, is that I, I'm not interested really in dwelling on what's happening right now because I feel comfortable with what's happening right now. But it's still not enough to mitigate the problem. That's my observation.
I kind of like the idea of a couple of the suggestions that you made. One was about the uniforms, maybe give the code enforcement officer a more professional sort of look when he goes out there. Also, the, the fact that, I kind of like the idea of having a, a vehicle that says code enforcement in maybe a different type of a color or kind of a, a different type of a truck or something that, that would make them look more official than, I've seen the little truck that comes out, or at one time with the person and looking at the weeds. And I said, oh, what are you doing? And he goes, oh, I'm the code enforcement. Oh, okay. Checking on weeds and stuff. And so I, I would think that if we had something like that, that would definitely make us look a little more professional.
So I know you don't want to talk about current, but I think I have to understand how we're currently doing it. So is, is our code enforcement officer a, an officer, like sworn officer? Okay. And, and what are they wearing and what are they driving? Because I'm not sure. I, I have the suggestion for what they should be doing, but I don't have enough information. I know the current situation.
Sure. So, so they're driving a white Ford F-150, very similar to what our Public Works staff drives.
So it's got the city logo on it?
It does. It's not, but it's not specific to, you know, it's not labeled code enforcement. In the realm of uniform, you know, through the years of the city of Montrose, we've gone back and forth in the code enforcement realm as far as a uniform or not. I do have a couple of concerns as far as the code enforcement officer wearing a uniform, only because we do, we went down the road of wearing a uniform in the past, and at times, we felt like that may have actually ramped up a situation rather than deescalated it. We had a situation here about two years ago, not with our current code enforcement officer, but our other code enforcement officer ended up pepper spraying a 70-year-old woman. As a result, the, the positive thing that came out of that is our relationship with the Region 10. There's another aspect that not often people think about, and when you wear the uniform, Kevin is not armed. And so we don't want Kevin to be mistaken as a police officer already in a heightened situation, just like this morning, where he's entering someone's private property. And I got to tell you, we have had some of the, the most negative interactions with citizens. When you tell someone they've got to clean up their, their stuff on their private property, that strikes a chord with them. So we, we have addressed Kevin in a different, I guess, uniform, if you will, more of a plainclothes uniform, because we're, we're focused on trying to develop that rapport.
Right. Well, I mean, today I can see he's wearing a, he's wearing a city branded polo. It's got a logo. I think it says code enforcement. It's got his name. I mean, I, I would think that's a great approach.
Yeah, it's, it's similar.
I mean, it'd be different if he was showing up like dressed, you know, without any identifying stuff.
How does that differ from animal control?
So animal control does wear a more formal uniform, but they're also in parks and in more, I guess, public spaces, if you will. And they're dealing with, they're dealing with individuals who I think are more likely to be in compliance, and they are not, sometimes they go on private property, sometimes they go contact citizens. But it's not quite as heightened as some of the situations Kevin and our former code enforcement officer has been involved in when you are dealing with someone's personal property. So we, we're trying to strike that happy medium, if you will, in the realm of code enforcement. I'm not opposed at all to, you know, putting a code enforcement logo on the side of the pickup.
That seems like the easiest low-hanging fruit to take away from today that I don't, doesn't sound like anyone has issues with. Like, there's not, there's not necessarily a con to that, the way there would be in a more police-looking.
You know, and I, I do agree with the point that was made. I'm not sure, it was either Jim or Ed made the point. I think it would heighten, no different than you see black and whites patrolling our city. It would heighten the visibility of code enforcement for sure. So I, I don't think that that's a, an issue at all.
Sorry, I'd like to give you about a five-minute warning for the end of the discussion. It goes fast.
It does go fast. Thanks, Ian. So, I mean, takeaways, my understanding is that in the last, let's say, year, our code enforcement program has gone from like a lot of leeway to work with people and give them time to more of a, hey, we're giving you a written thing, it's a week, like, we're enforcing more. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, with the identification of our top five properties, I think that we've reduced our, I don't know if I want to call it leeway, but we've reduced the time that's put into our process quite a bit. I, I think that we're doing, we can't reduce it any more than this.
Okay.
And if you have, like I said, if you have questions about the court process, because once that goes in citation, that's a process that is, it's just out of our hands. And I'm not, you know, I think our municipal court does a good job, but it's very dependent on the case. We, you know, our former, our, our former municipal court judge gave someone 60 days to uncover his, he coded over his water meter pit. And so he gave him 60 days to abate it on top of the months that we had dealt with this individual to get him to undo his water meter pit. And so that's something that, you know, we're going to continue to work towards.
Well, I, I've said it on court on a couple of occasions when we've had code enforcement issues in there, and they stick pretty, pretty close to it in most cases. They've been cited, they've been given time to, to take care of it, and they're, they still have to pay the fine on it also.
Yeah, I, I, I know we're not going to resolve all of this this morning and we're running out of time, and I'll just throw this out for consideration. I know everybody's plate is pretty full, and we, nobody really wants to create a new committee necessarily, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to form a committee, Bill, with a representative from Chief Hall's department, a representative from Jace's department, perhaps a representative from your department to kind of take a look at the issue and perhaps come up with some future recommendations of how to deal with this, both from a staffing standpoint and from a tools-in-your-toolbox standpoint.
So you're talking about an internal committee, yes?
Yes.
Not, not Citizen Advisory Committee, but just an internal committee?
Or the question would be, how?
No, I, I mean, I, that was just a makeup I suggested, but the more important thing I'd like to get out is perhaps that we, we should form a committee to really study the issue and come up with recommendations.
Can I, I'm going to flip that around to a question. Lots of good ideas here, lots of good information. What, as the city manager's office, what can we do or what can you do to take some of these ideas, these discussions, have them continue? What's, what are next, what do you see as being next steps from the city? And that might also be a good way to wrap it up. Like, what do we, what do we do with all this?
Sure. I think Jim met with some staff members prior to this meeting, so I think some of those ideas that we heard today have been relayed to staff because it circled to me. I think we already have a standing two-hour meeting called Community Engagement. And so I think we would put it on there, and we have a team of about 11 or 12 people that usually attend that various departments of the city, and we can sit on there and talk more about these ideas. Some of these are low-hanging fruit, I think, like expanding our volunteer database, partnering with Region 10, but we also know at the city, we've been talking about expanding our volunteer database for lots of things, not just this topic. And we've also talked with the PD. We've been kicking around the idea of helping with that career pathway, where we're getting high school students and then college-age students involved early on with the police department and with the city. So when they're of age to go to the police academy, they can hit the ground running. And this is just one area the chief and I have talked about, potentially getting some assistance that way as well, kind of like a citizen on patrol to help us out, be our eyes and ears and, and report maybe back to Kevin or to someone in the police department. And then the idea that Jim brought up about the city and county three-mile growth boundary in Wisconsin, where I worked prior, we had a three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction boundary, very similar to what we call the urban growth boundary here. And you had to be in compliance with all of the city codes if you were in that area because the city's going to annex eventually, those people most likely. Over time, when they need new subdivisions, they need water, they need sewer, commercial development goes out into that area. So starting early and making sure all those areas are ready to be annexed is really important. And a lot of the reasons we as a staff don't like to annex, we don't have a property tax, so there's no advantage to the city to annex people, other than we now have control over junk and abatement and nuisances, and we can clean up the area that's within our vision corridor. So when you come in town around Montrose, you can see stuff that we really aren't proud of, but it's not under our control. So I'd love to have that discussion with the county commissioners. That's going to be a political decision on the county side more than ours, because it's easy for us to just add that, and we'd probably have to add another staff member or whatever to make that happen. But it's going to be a political decision at the county level because they're going to change things, and there's some major properties right along, not even three miles, we could go one mile out, which would be more conservative. There's some major ones that need to be cleaned up, the county would have to do that. And just several years ago, the county did heighten their code enforcement activity, I believe, and beef up their ordinances a little bit on junk and nuisances and those kinds of things. But I'd, I'd love to have more discussion on that as well.
Okay. And I think, given that our time constraints, I think we're going to leave it at that. That was some good closing remarks on kind of what do we do going forward. I think I'll wrap it up from council's point of view, which is to keep us and citizens updated, like, for example, if we relabel the truck, let us know, hey, we relabeled the truck. Put it in the city newsletter. This, you know, this, this is the truck you might see. This is what they're out there doing. Or, hey, we have this new opportunity for citizens to get involved in this way. So keep, keep council and the community updated on anything that comes out of this and any changes that are made to code enforcement. Thank you very much. We are going to take 10 minutes and then we'll start our regularly scheduled Monday morning work session. Thanks, everyone.
Jim was over there. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. It's up to you. It's up to you.